I'm calling to order the February 26, 2024, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all meetings of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sharon, are there any public comments?
There is not.
Okay. So there are no public comments. We're going to move on to presentations and hearings. We have a public hearing for Outback Steakhouse. I believe they are in the Zoom.
Good evening. Elizabeth Pizzano here, representing Outback.
Thank you for that. Could you just hold one minute? We need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Hi, Elizabeth, could you give us a little bit of information?
Sure. So this is a change of manager application. Mark Duval is the proposed manager of record. He has over 20 years of experience, specifically with Outback Steakhouse, as a manager for their restaurant at various locations. He is familiar with the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol of this board in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He is a U.S. citizen, and he's on here tonight if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? It appears there are none. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Before we do that, do we have to ask if there's anybody in the public who wants to make a comment?
Yep, sorry. Is there anybody in the public that has any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So we would need a motion to approve or deny the change of manager.
Make a motion that we approve the change of manager. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much, Elizabeth and Mark. You are all set.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, so moving along, we have a presentation by Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on the sidewalk prioritization plan.
My name is Adam Menard. I'm the Town Planner. Myself and the DPW Director, Jonah Paquin, have been working with CMRPC on sidewalk prioritization for the last few months. Here with us are a couple of representatives from CMRPC who have put together this presentation and answer any questions for you once we're done.
Thank you.
Excellent. So hello, everyone. I'm Rob Rehman. I'm a transportation planner at the CMRPC, and I'm here to give you a brief update on the Auburn Local Sidewalk Prioritization Plan that we've been working on, as Adam said, with the town for the last several months. So first, just a quick introduction to the CMRPC for anyone who might not be as familiar with us. So we were founded in 1963 by the state legislature, and we're one of 13 regional planning agencies in the state, and our purpose is to help give a regional view to development and planning in the Central Mass region, which is shown on this map. So it's Worcester and the 39 towns that surround it. The transportation planning staff is also the staff to this Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a federally designated organization, and we prepare transportation documents to ensure that federal transportation funds can be spent in the region. Auburn is locally represented on the CMRPC by three delegates appointed by both the Select Board and the Planning Board. And also Dr. Menard, the Auburn Town Planner, is the chairperson of the MPO Advisory Committee. So this is our core project team was made up of four transportation staff. We are supported by other CMRPC staff as required. And we have a brief, just a brief timeline here. In August, we held a kickoff meeting with the Town Planning Staff and DPW staff. We then began our data collection process. Following the completion of our main data collection efforts, we had a post-data collection meeting to just review the work that we had done, make sure that there was no big areas that we missed, and to make sure that generally the data made sense with local knowledge. Following that, we drafted our plan, and then in January, we had a meeting to review the draft plan with town staff. Let's see. So a local sidewalk prioritization plan is a newer type of plan that we've been developing for our communities. It's really an extension of the MassDOT Complete Streets prioritization program that allows for a little bit more of a customized planning approach, and we hope that these plans, as we develop them, will help to inform any updates to complete streets prioritization plans that were developed at the start of the MassDOT program about five years ago. So Auburn's Complete Streets prioritization plan was drafted by the CMRPC in 2019 with the assistance of the Town Planning Staff and the DPW. It was adopted by MassDOT in 2020. But since 2020, a lot of things have changed. There's a growing shift to more pedestrian accommodations, more inclusive pedestrian accommodations, and a lot of this can be seen by the adoption of the Vulnerable Road User Law by the state and the need for more accessible pedestrian accommodations that are inclusive to all users. So each town, each plan can be customized, but in general, they consist of an inventory of the town's assets, the development and listing of projects, and some kind of prioritization So the Auburn Local Sidewalk Prioritization Plan, we were first contacted by the Town of Auburn about developing this plan. We had some initial discussions and determined that the plan would develop an inventory of the current state of Auburn sidewalk infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, to help identify areas for network expansion and possible safety improvements. So the inventory was completed by the CMRPC. We used our regional pavement inventory system. So the data collection efforts commenced in August. In our inventory system, we had all the data from when we collected the data back in 2019 for the Complete Streets prioritization plan. So we knew where a lot of the sidewalks back then existed, so we were able to update that information and add any new sidewalks that had been added since then. So we used our mobile GIS equipment. So we inventoried the condition and location of sidewalks, curb ramps, crosswalks. We also inventoried the location and type of pedestrian signage and obstructions to the sidewalk network. So the map on the right here is just an example of our mapping exercise. So you can see we have some sidewalks along the roadways. The dots represent the locations of curb ramps. Crossing the street are the sidewalk, are the crosswalk locations, and then there's some yellow squares at the top that are indicating the location of pedestrian signs. So just some, oops, so just some high-level statistics after the completion of our data collection effort is that we identified 57 and a half miles of sidewalk in Auburn. Of that, 70% of the mileage was in excellent or good condition. So that's the blue and the green on the map to the left. We identified 722 curb ramps, 63% were in good condition, which are shown as the blue dots to the map on the right. But we also identified 174 locations that do not have a curb ramp that should have a curb ramp, and those are indicated by the dots on the red. So those locations are areas where there's maybe a crosswalk crossing the street and there's a vertical curb ramp. So the crosswalk, there's no way for a pedestrian to safely get from the sidewalk to the crosswalk and across the road or out of the road onto the sidewalk network. We also identified that there were 145 marked crosswalks in Auburn, but only 27 pedestrian-related signs in town. And then we also observed 302 obstructions to the sidewalk and ramp network. Most of the obstructions we observed were either mailboxes or telephone poles restricting the walking path through them, and a lot of them are kind of grouped together, right? So it could be one road that has five, six telephone poles or 20 mailboxes all kind of in a row. Talking with the town, they are working to try and address that, especially with mailboxes, by having mailboxes instead of kind of the long way that would be blocking the sidewalk, starting to turn them so that there's a little bit more room for people to walk by. So based on the collected data, kind of compared to some of the other towns in our region, Auburn generally has a really well-maintained sidewalk network. It has good connections to the downtown, to its commercial area, to its schools, but there's definitely areas that connections could be provided. There were a number of areas where developments had sidewalks within the development, but those developments weren't actually connected to the greater sidewalk network. So those are really good sidewalks to kind of go for a walk, maybe after dinner, but you couldn't really get anywhere with those. Excellent. So once the data was collected, the CMRPC and town staff, we held that post-data collection meeting to review that collected data. We also agreed upon some of the prioritization processes that we would use, and based on our discussion, it was determined that this prioritization plan would really be a network expansion plan. The town's DPW expressed that they were committed to repairing sidewalks as they repair their roads. So as a road comes up for either repavement or reconstruction, they're committed to looking at the sidewalk network, the pedestrian network at that time. And for our view, that's actually a very positive thing. It takes the competition between sidewalks and roadways away, which is a fight that sidewalks often lose. You know, roads are much more expensive. There's a lot more volume. There's a lot more people who are vocal about their roadways. So by putting those together, it kind of takes that competition away, and it really helps to carry on the spirit of the Complete Streets policy that the town adopted at the start of the MassDOT Complete Streets prioritization process. So we did this prioritization using a two-step method. So the group of maps on the right show the 10 high-priority areas that were identified. So these are things like schools, transit routes, senior housing or Auburn Housing Authority locations, the town hall, the library, disconnected neighborhoods, and population density. So we used a buffer analysis to assign a score to every road segment in town. So roads that were within a quarter mile of an identified high-priority area received two points, and roads that were in a half mile received one point. So we were able to score all the roads in town and assign them an aggregate score based on priority. So these are areas that with the higher score, we think would have a better chance to either generate or have traffic that's generated near it or coming to it. So once that was complete, we then went through an exclusion process, which the map on the right is showing. So we excluded roads from consideration that were either like dead-end roads as part of the Complete Streets policy. A lot of those roads, even if they don't have sidewalks on them, they can be considered a complete street because the traffic is so low, the speeds are so low, that it's actually pretty safe to walk alongside the road. We also excluded things like MassDOT-owned roads because the town is unable to do work on those roads. We excluded private roads and roads that didn't have the available right-of-way to accommodate a sidewalk. So following that process, we were able to develop a listing of identified priority segments, which you can see here on the right. So our scores ranged, they ranged from, I believe, a 12 to a 3. Oops. Classic. That's what I get for, there we go, 12 to a 3. And you can see that we do have some notes on our prioritization listing noting whether this project is a disconnected neighborhood project. We also tried to identify some different funding possibilities outside of just the town budget for this work. And then the map on the left is showing those segments on a map in the Town of Auburn. So just some additional recommendations that we had in addition to the network expansion, to the expansion recommendations, is crosswalk consolidation. So in talking with the town DPW, and as you saw in our numbers, there's a huge number of crosswalks in Auburn. Many of them are redundant. I guess there was a time when maybe if there was a concern on a street, the town would go out and add a crosswalk, hoping that it would increase safety, but in many cases, it can actually make things a little bit more dangerous. So this example here is Oxford Street North and Auburn Street. You can see that there are three crosswalks within 150 feet of each other. There's actually only one stop sign at the intersection, and it's actually only stopping traffic for one direction. So having crosswalks like this could add a kind of a false sense of security for people crossing the street. Having them so close together is going to make drivers kind of sometimes forget that there's, oh, there's another crosswalk, there's another one, within such a short distance. And crosswalks are really controlled by the manual of uniform traffic control devices, and placing crosswalks so close together is not a recommended treatment. And they really recommend that they're placed in conjunction with stop or yield signs, or if they're at the mid-block, like some of these are, that there are more pedestrian signs included, which our numbers show that there's a kind of a severe lack of pedestrian signage throughout the town. So some of the next steps we have is we want to work with the town to finalize the plan, incorporate any comments that you may have or we may have following this presentation. We're going to assist Auburn in implementing the plan and keeping the data current. So we do have a five-year maintenance contract with Auburn. So if there's anything in the next five years that kind of comes up, we want to revise this. We have the ability to do that. We also, as part of our regular transportation planning effort, we inventory the federally eligible roads on a regular basis. So anytime that we come back and do that survey as part of our planning work, our database will be updated, and anytime the town needs, you know, additional maps, things updated, we're happy to do that as part of our work. And definitely helps identify some funding sources for some of the projects. Recently, our Transportation Improvement Program, we have a thing called micro projects, so that's transportation projects that are $500,000 or less. So sidewalk improvements definitely fall kind of into that vein. The city of Worcester is applying for, I think, $50,000 for some bike racks right now, so certainly a sidewalk improvement project would be considered for that. And starting this year, we're also allocating $1 million a year for design funding through the tip. So a small, maybe, design engineering project, you know, of a sidewalk, maybe a pedestrian crossing, something like that, could definitely be funded through that option. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Please, Mr. Carpenter, go ahead.
So thank you for the report. I did notice Oxford Street North. I would just mention that the reason that those crosswalks are there, the one, is because of the church.
Yep.
And we can't get a stop sign on the hill because the concern was during the winter, people would have a problem.
Yep.
And the one closer is for the senior complex. You know, they may not be able to make it all the way down there. And as far as handicap accessibility, even though the upper parking lot at St. Joe's does have handicap parking, if you need flat, you kind of need to park by the rectory, so...
Right, yeah.
I mean, there are some rationales for why those exist, which doesn't mean that we can't improve, you know, signage and other things of that nature. I enjoyed going through the report. It was nice to hear that our sidewalks are in better repair than I think is generally considered by a lot of people, so I thought that was good. The recommendations, and I know this is probably not judging from the scope that I read, but just as a general estimate, what would be, or is this something for town administration to generate, an estimate of what we can do to get these up to good repair? And as a follow-up, I mean, I do hope that the board will commit some free cash annually, make that part of the policy, that we commit some free cash to the sidewalk program and potentially the Chapter 90, so that we can get some of these roads, you know, done sooner rather than later.
If I may, through the chair, Mr. Carpenter, I don't know what the value of bringing those sidewalks up to a standard that is superior to what we have now. That's a conversation I would have to have with our DPW director, but certainly, we programmed as part of an initiative in the current fiscal year, $150,000 to begin to address our sidewalk program. In addition to that, moving forward, we programmed in FY '25 in the CIP, and I want to emphasize the CIP because that gives us the ability to carry that money over if it's not expended by June 30th. Problem being, if it's programmed into the operational side of the budget and not expended by June 30th, it closes out the free cash, and we lose the ability to utilize those funds for improvements that will be on June 30th. So you're going to see an item under DPW for sidewalk program in FY '25 for $100,000 in addition to what we already have of $150,000. $50,000 is currently programmed in the operational side of the budget. I had a discussion with DPW director today that we begin to address the need that's identified in this report and get some of that work done this spring so we can use at least the $50,000 that's programmed in to the operational side of the budget. Okay. Thank you.
Just had one question. Thank you for the presentation. I'm looking at the list of identified priority segments, and underneath, under the column headed "Possible Funding Sources," what is the, this is listed, SRTS funding? What's that mean?
So that's Safe Roots to School. So Auburn is a Safe Roots to School community. So within, I believe it's a mile of an eligible school, which generally is an elementary school or a middle school, certain infrastructure improvements in order to basically help kids start walking or biking to school safely are eligible. They did, I think, recently also make some accommodations for high schools, and certainly I can, we have a, our main pedestrian kind of mobility planner would be happy to work with the town to help get some of that funding unlocked.
Thank you. Is that a grant that we would have to apply for?
It is a grant. It's a kind of a construction grant, and one of the things that really helps kind of move that forward is you really need a kind of a champion in the school itself. There's a kind of a Safe Roots to School coordinator for each school, and they're really the ones that have to get that program moving forward. So it can be, it can be difficult at times.
Thank you. Do board members have additional questions?
So I apologize. I'm going to have a couple of questions because I'm a geek when it comes to transportation stuff. Thank you for the report. I loved it. I have a couple of questions, though, in terms of some of the analysis that was done. In terms of the data collected on the sidewalks, I didn't see that you collected whether the width of the sidewalks or whether they're ADA or PROAG compliant. Do you know, did you guys note that for the sidewalks themselves, not necessarily the ramps, but the sidewalks?
Yep, so we did measure the width of each sidewalk, and sidewalks that were less than four feet were noted as being kind of obstructed, and we took photos of it. We do have a kind of an online dashboard that we've been working on that is a little bit more sometimes useful than these paper maps, because when you click on it, it'll show kind of the photos that we took and the widths of the sidewalks.
Did the ADA compliance, either on the sidewalks or the ramps, factor into your condition matrix, or was that separate?
So that was separate. So the condition is really the ability for sidewalks to walk without an obstruction of kind of a trip hazard is really what we look at. Is so we look for whether it's kind of a highly cracked sidewalk to the point where, you know, there's so many cracks in the sidewalk that it's shoving up and you're tripping over it. So that would, that's kind of more of the impact of the condition of the sidewalk. And then for the ramps, we rate the kind of the physical condition of the ramp, and then we note some aspects of accessibility. So we note whether it's an apex ramp, we note whether it has flares or detectable warning panels.
So in your database, does DPW have access to, although it's not reflective in the matrix, do they have access to a list of ramps that are non-compliant, although their condition could be good according to the, you know, the material?
Right.
But they're non-compliant, so if somebody with a wheelchair wouldn't be able to get up or get down it because of the grade is too steep?
Correct, yeah. The DPW has access to our database.
Great. Just one other note, and I love our blue crosswalks. I'll be quite honest with you. Up until 2023, your report's correct, they weren't allowed. The new MUTCD does now allow them. So that's one of the things I can send Adam to, you know, just, it's important that, you know, when this comes out, people understand that the town is not in violation, that, you know, that the blue sidewalks are now allowed. It's Section 3H01, in case you're interested. And it's been a change that now, as long as it's not a non-reflective color and it's not meant to communicate a traffic condition, you can now have colored treatments in between the white bars, provided you have the white bars.
Excellent.
So that's one of the things, so the blue crosswalks can stay, which I'm happy about. In terms of the, to the administration, Mr. Mandriad, through yourself, Dr. Menard, or Director Paquin, I note in here that it says, you know, "We are committed to comprehensive Complete Streets fixing of our roads." And I understand that that means that as you're redoing a road, you are repairing existing sidewalks, bringing them into compliance, ramps into compliance now, which is great. Are we also looking at, while you're there doing that work, installing sidewalks, if they're new sidewalks now that they've been identified as a desired path here, or is that still going to be a separate part?
So at this point, we're looking to, we're still planning on having our regular roadway project list. If one of those roadways is also on this list, we would, you know, take the opportunity to address it, but we also want to plug away at this separately. So it would just depend on the situation.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that it's, that we're hitting it from different angles as long as, okay. Yeah, so again, great report. I'm glad that we have this information. I'm excited that it's not going to sit on the shelf and collect us, that it's actually going to get implemented. I will just note that, at least my eyes, when I looked at the printed report, it seemed that the prioritization list in Figure 15 did not match the map, and what drew my attention to this was specifically something that this board has heard from several residents, and I know I've gotten emails and calls on it that I've transmitted to the town manager, well, Bryn Mar. So Bryn Mar, as it approaches, so you actually have it in Figure 16 on the map showing that it is a priority zone, but it's not in the list. but it's not in the list for Figure 15. So it's Bryn Mawr Avenue as it meets Warren Street. You have it in red on the Figure 16 priority map.
Okay.
But you don't have it on the list. And I know that, at least, I think that, you know, this board heard from several residents at a couple of meetings that that segment was a priority. It is a gap. So you have an existing sidewalk that was just redone by DPW. It's great. It's pristine. It's beautiful. They've rotated the mailboxes, which is great. Then there's a section that's in fair condition, probably, depending on your analysis. But then there's a gap where it's missing as you cross over the pike. And then the sidewalk picks up on Warren Street. So there's that small gap that the residents are very interested in connecting. Right now, they walk in the street, and then they walk back on the sidewalk once they get to it. But that would connect in a continuous compliance sidewalk from Oxford Street North all the way to Route 12, just by filling in that little gap. So I'd like to see if the administration would look at the prioritization list and consider adding that to the prioritization.
Yeah, I can definitely take a look at that. It's possible. We use the Mass DOT Road Inventory File for our scoring. So it's possible that that might have kind of overrun a little bit and caused it to get pulled out when it shouldn't have.
And through the chair, that's an observation we did make today. I had a discussion with our DPW director. So that's something we are going to focus on and revisit.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Moving along, we have no departmental items. Number six, we have no communications. We're going to move to number seven, the Select Board General Items. We do have a drain layers license. I do want to note that he does not have to be here for this. Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion then?
Make a motion that we issue the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with all, any and all conditions shall invalidate it and render it null and void.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. And we need to have a second vote to set the hours?
Motion that we set the hours for the May 21st, 2024 Annual Town Meeting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. And we need to have a second vote to set the hours?
Motion that we set the hours for the May 21st, 2024 Annual Town Election to be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We have no proclamations or recognitions. We do have a gift acceptance.
Motion that we accept the gift acceptance is in the amount of $200 from Paul A. Curran Cusson, sorry, Construction to the Fire Department Gift Account, and a $50 gift from Worcester Oban Emblem Club, number 51, also to the Fire Department Gift Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. So we're moving along to number eight, the Town Manager Items.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, I am going to present our recommendation to you this evening in hopes that you will vote and forward this to the Finance Committee for them to begin their deliberations at a scheduled meeting this Wednesday. With that being said, I'm going to make my way to the podium.
Sure.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank our Assistant Town Manager, who's not with us this evening, our Town Accountant and CFO, Karen is in attendance, to all our department heads, to our School Superintendent, to our School Business Manager, for their patience and cooperation during the strenuous budget prep period. We met multiple times in an effort to balance revenue against expenditures and made some difficult decisions. I hope the hand wringing is over, and we remain focused on the budget priorities we were unable to address. We are presenting a budget to you tonight that is recommending appropriations of $82,416,265.43. Before I continue, all the members have a copy of what I'm presenting tonight. We made it available for you. We will post this on the website at the completion of the presentation. Actually, after we present to the Finance Committee, we'll post it online. As you can see, and I'm going to go through the various revenue sources as I get deeper into the presentation, but the revenue sources equal, have an equal amount of $82,416,437.89, with an unobligated amount of roughly $172 and change. When we look year, current year that we're in, over what we're recommending, we are estimating an additional $812,000 and change, or a 7.50% increase in local receipts, a cherry sheet increase just slightly under 1%, 0.99, or $166 increase, tax levy, which includes new growth, and Prop 2.5 of $2,68,238.77, that's a 4.66% increase, a reduction in debt exclusion as a result of the retirement of the debt for the Auburn High School, reduction of roughly $1,272,000, or roughly a 46% reduction, and a reduction of available funds of $1.6 million or 43.56. Total revenue up over current year of $162,482. It's just slightly under a quarter of a percent increase, as well as the appropriations as well. When we look at the tax levy, as you see, we programmed in the full value of 2.5 of $1,368,238. We brought our new growth in line with our five-year average of $700,000, thus utilizing all of 2.5. And our utilization of taxation would be taxing at a rate of 83.64%. Once again, to highlight the elements of the tax levy, we're using 100% of 2.5, that's $1,368,000. Adjusted new growth to reflect our five-year average, our five-year average is $761,881. We programmed in $700,000. We're hoping to receive some additional growth as a result of the construction at Eastland Partners that hasn't hit the books yet. But that's a two-and-a-half-year phase, and so we don't know what the value of that is going to be for the, for next fiscal year. I am recommending a one-year reprieve of 1/10 of 2.5 towards our CIP. I'm actually suggesting that we redirect that to our operating budget. Retires $1.2 million for the high school debt. There's no consideration at this time on the excess levy use that currently stands at $9.3 million. The budget recommends and maintains our current excess levy of 9.3 at FY24 value. Despite of the use of 2.5 taxation, at status quo, assessed value should be minimal tax increase given the retirement of the high school debt. And based on the sales data, the residential home value is slowing down, but continue to increase, not at the levels we've seen the last two years. I don't know what that increase is going to be right now, but discussions with our chief assessor lead me to believe that it's going to be under the 10% that we realized the last two years. I just want to show you our new growth over the last five years, $761,000. Our actual new growth for FY24 was $721,064. We're estimating $700,000, somewhat more conservative, less conservative than we used in prior years. We normally came in at about 500. And we use that excess growth as a mechanism for consideration of when we set the dual tax rate. In terms of cherry sheet state aid, under the governor's proposed budget, we're getting $166,000. I can tell you Auburn's five-year average of state aid has been $942,000. That's $775,000 below average. And that's alarming. That's much concerning to us. The current year FY24 increase of state aid, the year that we're in, we received $160,000 above the year before. And FY23 was $1.8 million gain over the year before. The reduction in state aid is resulting on a greater dependency for our local revenues, local receipts and taxation to meet our budgetary needs. I can tell you, state revenues continue to fall shy of revised estimates for FY24. We can expect volatility over the next several fiscal years as a result of declining revenue. And we may also have to consider budgetary cuts if the governor's estimates do not hold up. Here is a graph on our level of state aid over the past eight years. As you can see, we've been averaging $942,690. One area that we've taken a position to be less conservative on is a way to balance our budget, is our budget to actual as it applies to our local receipts. It's up 7.50% or about $812,000. We pressed more juice out of the grapes this year as a way to balance the budget. What will that mean? That may result in a reduction in free cash because that excess revenue above and beyond estimated will not be available. I can tell you, interest income is up significantly and allowed us to adjust that projection up by $300,000. Although I can tell you, the economy is fragile. A downturn in those rates could result in a downturn in the return on investment. There is a local option under the Governor's Municipal Power Act, not approved by the legislature yet. It would give a local option to increase our mails tax from 0.75% to 1%. Based on FY23 actuals, that would result, if approved and adopted by the board, an additional $126,000. Room occupancy tax, there's an option to go up an additional 1%. Based upon FY23 actuals, that would be an increase in local revenue of $133,000. And there's also an option for an excise tax surcharge of 5%. Based on FY23 actual, that would be an additional $165,000. There's no intention at this time to rely on any local option revenue to supplement what I am presenting tonight. Here is a picture of our local receipts FY24 to FY25. As you can see, there's an $812,000 increase. Those numbers have been provided to you in advance of tonight's meeting. I can tell you, our available funds are down roughly $1.6 million or 43.50%. This reduction is primarily made up of the one-time use of free cash that we typically vote on in the fall to fund primarily our OPEB and our stabilization accounts. Those requests typically come in at a fall town meeting. There's a 500 reduction in the use of retained earnings because there was some CIP identified in the FY24 budget that is not reoccurring. In FY24, we used the Reserve Fund Bond proceeds to fund some FY24 capital purchases. Here are estimates for FY25 by funding source. As you can see, bottom line, we're going down from $4.5 million to $2.9 million. On the expense side of the equation, I can tell you that several positions were requested by the departments. That could not be considered. One, full-time police patrol. There was a full-time DPW fleet mechanic requested. There was a planning review engineer requested from DDIS. There was GIS support, not specifically identified in the budget, but given some consideration over the past several years, we actually are exploring a regional approach for that as well. And additional DDIS clerical support. I can tell you, this budget does recommend the elimination of the HR generalist position, which is currently funded in FY24, but has been recently become vacant. And the budget potentially could mean the elimination of school department personnel based upon the recommendation I made to the school department, which they're going to bring in on Wednesday. Beth, when's the school committee meeting? Wednesday? Wednesday. So they're going to have to consider the recommendation, how that's going to impact their budget. On recommended positions, I can tell you, there's one full-time training lieutenant. And there's a quarter of a fiscal year police lieutenant's position to address police, employee state accreditation, as well as body cam video administration. Fixed costs, I can tell you, this budget recommends all contractual, all current contractual obligations. It provides a sum of money in the school department budget to meet, hopefully, school contracts that are expiring on 6/30/24. It adds $75,000 to DPW fleet to meet the escalation cost for vehicle repairs and supplies. It increases public safety overtime by $90,000, 55 of which is in police, 35 is which is in fire. And I know you're all familiar with the fire overtime need that you have addressed over the past several months. Bay Path Assessment is up 15%, quarter of a million dollars almost, as a result of 14 new students being enrolled into their school system. Norfolk Aggie is funded at FY24 level, was just notified late last week that there is an additional application for enrollment that is being considered. Acceptance will not be known until April of this year. So that could have an additional $55,000 impact on our budget as well. The FY25 meets solid waste collection and disposal costs. Pension benefits recommendation is up 5.55% of $768,000. Of that, 8.7% is made up of our Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment, and that's discounted if we pay by July 1. It's discounted by 80, almost $83,000. So over the past several years, that discount option has been an option that we've taken advantage of. Our group health, recently told, is estimated to be an increase of roughly 10%. Certainly, our budget does not account for a 10% increase. Our increase is being driven by our FY25 loss ratio. On one provider, it's in excess of 100%. It's trending well above 100%. That's resulting in a higher renewal rate. The town is considering mitigating a portion of that premium increase by offering premium holidays in FY25, which saves the town money and saves our employees' money. We're considering leveraging a portion of that increase against an equity balance of $11 million that we currently have in the trust. I can tell you, the town operating budgets are very lean. There's not much in the way of discretionary line item spending. This budget continues to address professional development and certifications to advance our employees for succession planning purposes. We have a lot of turnover. We're trying to educate our employees to position themselves to take over key positions when they do. over key positions when they do become available. This budget currently eliminates our celebration accounts. That's Memorial Day, 4th of July, special events. We will seek other ways to fund those, possibly through utilization of some of our revolving accounts or potential 40B mitigation costs. I can tell you, one of the other discretionary items that remained in the budget that we may be forced to revisit is the de-weeding of our ponds. Here is a recommendation by department that's been provided to you. I hit on the key elements of those, leading up to a total recommendation of $82,416,265.43. In summary, we have total revenue of $82,416,437.89, total expense of $82,416,265.43, leaving an unobligated balance of $172.46. It is a balanced budget. It utilizes all of 2.5. Once again, we will post a copy of this presentation on our town website after it's presented to the Finance Committee on Wednesday evening.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
Oh, no, you have way more. So let's get, you might ask some of mine, so.
You might ask some of mine, so please.
So first and foremost, I'm not happy to hear that we're cutting the celebrations because frankly, that doesn't represent a huge number in an $82 million budget. So I would like to see those reinstated because I think that's an important thing that we celebrate, Memorial Day especially, considering the sacrifices that the veterans have paid for the country. However, now that I've gotten off my soapbox, really more of a question for the school department, I guess, which is, I know we've seen Bay Path, you know, an increased interest in Bay Path. Have we seen any students come back, choose not to complete their program at Bay Path? And if there's a number on that?
Hello, good evening. I don't have that number prepared for this evening. I can certainly get that to you. We do get students that do come back. Not in large numbers. I could say maybe three or four a year. Sometimes, it's typically after the beginning of their freshman year, so they go and they decide after, in a short time, like, no, that's not going to work for me. And then again, we sometimes see it at the beginning of their sophomore year. So when they're really starting getting into the shops and they decide, no, they just prefer to be back. So there always are a few that come back, but not in large numbers.
And don't run away because, of course, I saw the big yellow on removing school department personnel. Can you give us any insight? I know the school committee might have this already, but, you know, I don't want to, what are we talking about as far as school personnel?
I'll be presenting to them on Wednesday evening. It would be two or three positions, depending on how that goes. Where those would be, we don't know. We have a couple of placeholders right now. We would look very closely toward the end of the year at our enrollment and our real needs to make sure that if we have to remove positions, that it has the least amount of impact on our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That does it for my questions.
Mr. Kozinovich, I want just to reaffirm that you said that those holiday programs wouldn't necessarily be canceled, but that we would find other means of funding them than putting a line item in the budget. Is that correct?
We are going to do everything to find an alternative revenue source to make that happen. Now, it was difficult, as it stands right now, to present the balanced budget without a body or two flying or eliminating a body or two. We did our best to preserve jobs. That was our main goal. I wanted to underscore the symbolism and the importance of the difficulties we were facing as it pertains to this budget recommendation. It's not happy when we remove any type of program for our residents. We understand the importance of that. I think this offers us an opportunity to look at alternative funding sources to make that happen, as well as consider maybe using a portion of our free cash at the Fall Town Meeting to reinstate those programs.
Okay, thank you. I just had one other question. So we have the governor's budget numbers. Aren't those usually higher than the budget, the numbers that we get from the legislature?
So all indications, since the governor released her budgetary numbers, revenues continue to decline. I am proposing that we meet with our department head sometime next week after we present the budget to both bodies to have a discussion, a what-if discussion, if the situation at the state level gets more dire. That being, a loss of revenue is going to result in a reduction of local revenue, which is going to force our hand to make those cuts to balance the budget.
Okay. So when does the legislature put together their proposal and their numbers for the budget?
Typically, the House numbers are released near the tail end of March.
Okay.
So we're hoping to get a second set of numbers. Unfortunately, sometimes it comes in at the tail end of the Finance Committee's review of the budget. And then we're forced to make a supplemental recommendation or cuts, either through amendments or through, or at a Fall Town Meeting.
Okay, so we won't know what our actual state aid numbers are until the summer, right?
You're probably not going to know the state aid numbers sometime to laugh, well after Town Meeting, probably after June 30th.
Okay.
Similar to what we saw last year.
And then we'll make adjustments as necessary at the special Town Meeting in October.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Steve, do you have a question?
Okay. So I apologize, being the new guy. I had a whole bunch of questions. I will try to minimize for the benefit of staff and my fellow board members so we're not here all night and possibly set a meeting with you just so I can understand this a little bit better. Just to start, though, one of the questions I have, as you mentioned earlier, that you were moving the sidewalk funding from the operating budget over to the CIP, and one of the benefits of that is that in case we don't spend it all, it can carry over. One of the also benefits is if next fiscal year we run shy, that's something that we can use that money if we don't spend it, but we don't have to replenish it. Why not do that with the roadway money as well? You have $535,000 in the DPW operating budget. Why not put that into the CIP so that if DPW doesn't use all of that this year, it can carry forward and not use or lose it?
So typically, without knowing how quickly we could move on the sidewalk, and certainly the 50 jumps out at you in the current year because we just received this report, typically we use our roadway money before our Chapter 90 money. So our Chapter 90 money is about 600. We always have a spring road reconstruction program, and we have no trouble spending our $535,000 through the operating budget because we're spending that down first.
Another question I had, in just general, when I look at the budget and the increases in salary across the board, you know, and I understand that this is largely based off of negotiations with different bargaining units within different various unions. You see a 1%, a 2%, a 3% raise, depending on which they are. And you typically see for the bylaw personnel, the clerks that maybe aren't covered, they're getting sort of a 2% raise. I get concerned with both the optics as well as the message we're sending when, and please do not take this the wrong way, our department heads are worth every penny and then a lot more, but some of them are getting increases of 4%, 4.5%, when those working under them are getting 2% or 1%. Has there been any look at possibly either postponing or reducing the amount that they're getting increased, more in line with the staff that they're overseeing?
So I think what you're not seeing is typically a union contract provides for annual COLA. In addition to that, in most cases, those individuals are also getting a step increase. So they're getting more than the provided COLA contractually. That actually puts them ahead of department heads on a percentage basis.
Okay. So that I just make the recommendation, the way that it's presented here, it doesn't show that necessarily. When you show the percentages, the increase they're getting, it says 2% or it says 1%. It doesn't also show the COLA, I assume, would be above that. So that might, so that gives the optics and the messaging that, you know, we're favoring our department heads and not our everyday staff. And I just want to make sure that if that's not the case.
I can tell you that's not the case.
Then, then if we can present it even better, that makes me a lot happier. So one of the questions I have, since this budget is already at the 2.5, it has $176 wiggle room for the school department. I get, when I read your letter, you're going into negotiations with the teachers' union. We've all just seen what happened in Newton. We know what happened in Andover. We know what happened in Brookline. We know they're willing to go on strike. We know their strike fund is high enough that they're willing to pay $100,000, $200,000 in penalties. And what finally comes out is a lot closer to what the teachers wanted than where the municipality started. Have we had really discussions or is there some wiggle room that we're not seeing in this budget so that if that does happen to Auburn, we have some way of meeting those demands? Or are we going to be in the same place as Newton, Andover, Brookline? And if not, are we making steps to become ready and to address that? It's not an easy answer. I understand that. I just get really worried when I see that, you know, your budget is, you're already being asked to cut personnel. You're not factoring in any increases here, and I just get concerned about that.
We do have funding put aside for increases. We knew we were going, we've been in negotiations since early October, which continue, I just left from there this evening. We've made some great progress toward coming to agreement, but I will tell you, this is an unbelievably difficult climate based on the number of things you just talked about and the number of towns. The MTA is driving unions to go to strike, to get what they want. I believe, based on the good faith bargaining we've been through so far, that we're going to come to an agreement, that we are going to be able to meet with the budget that we're presenting. But that is my definite half-glass-full approach. But there is some room, not a lot, not a lot. So I don't have a great answer for that because, you know, there isn't a magical pot of money either, right? As we heard this evening, you know? Our increase in our Chapter 70 money was only 71,000. Last year, it was 1.1 million, the increase. So we're all facing it. And I think that we have a lot of good things going for us in Auburn already in our schools, and I do believe we can come to some agreement. So I don't know that that's a great answer because, of course, there's a lot that I'm not able to say at this time, but we are doing our best to make sure that we don't end up in a big hole. And I will say, it seems like many of the towns who did go to strike, that the teachers won. But in many cases, what they settled on was what they began with. It just, the way it comes out in the press is very different. So I'm hoping that we can come to a good agreement as well, so.
Great, thank you. And just the last question is, there are some vacancies in some other departments, oh, not, yeah, notably police and library. Those are two where I think that, you know, we need those personnel, as you saw from the police overtime, and that that has a direct effect. So are those positions being actively advertised for now? Or are you holding those positions and saying, don't advertise until the next fiscal year? Because I know that at the library, there's been several long-term vacancies in those positions. That is concerned. And also, you know, when I looked at the police, there was, you know, three or four, maybe even more patrol officers that were vacant. I just want to make sure that, you know, I know that the budget is lean, but those are personnel that are providing vital services that we really do need.
We're going to do everything we can to move forward filling those positions. Now, I can't tell you if another whale is going to come off the bus two weeks down the road, but certainly it's a day-to-day situation. Right now, the green light is a go, but we may be forced to revisit that if the situation deteriorates even further.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
Just have one follow-up. So to Mr. Corrine's point, we have bylaw employees. Am I correct in saying that they don't annually necessarily get an increase? So you may see an increase of 4%, 5% in a given year, but they are not automatically given an increase, the bylaw employees. Is that an accurate statement?
So there are two components in addressing non-represented employees. We call them bylaw employees. Certainly, the newer bylaw employees are not entitled to additional compensation during their first year of employment. But there are those who have been here for a number of years that are given what I would call a standard 2%, all depending on the economics, consistent with other bargaining groups. And there's an evaluation, a successful evaluation component of 1% that they are entitled to upon completion of a successful evaluation.
Thank you.
So when you're talking about projected revenue, I know you mentioned like the Eastland Partners developments and such. Are you only taking into account those known developments that we're doing? Are we talking, like, do you have a formula where you're looking at potential options, like something could happen, or it's just what's in the pipeline as known?
So, great question. So I think what's been programmed and would reflect the standard normal building activity on an annual basis, not including Eastland Partners, okay? I think Eastland Partners is expected to add $1.2 million to the levy in terms of new growth over that two-and-a-half-year period. I think we can all see what's going on on the west side of town in terms of construction. I don't know what that value is yet. Certainly, it is, it is something that we will be able to consider once that value hits the books. Now typically, the value is assessed as of January 1. But in projects or developments such as Eastland Partners, you're allowed to do what they call a supplemental billing for a period from January to June 30. That brings that additional value on the books. That's the value we're looking to capture for FY '25. I don't know what that is yet, but certainly I think it's, it will be coming.
And then, I know we talk at tax classification time, but I'd love to see more outreach or what we're doing for business communities and trying to attract additional businesses here, again, to help that. So in the future, I don't know if that's an option where we can have them present and what we're trying to do to make it look more attractive. Again, seeing, going to two and a half isn't necessarily the great storytelling we want to hear, but I'd love to see what's in the pipeline and how we can try to get ahead and make sure that we're not in this position, you know, three to five years from now.
So most recently, we had a business roundtable here at Town Hall where, you know, 20 participants from the, from the, from the community, business community attend, and we have a general discussion about a number of items. But they have been put on notice that it's going to be a difficult year. We're stretching our resources to the limit in terms of taxing at two and a half. I think there's an understanding that we're going to go to the full levy. Certainly, if things improve, and I don't expect them to improve, we'd be willing to back off of that. But right now, without the loss of bodies, we, we have to go to two and a half. And nothing beyond that. Certainly, I indicated we have 9.3 million of excess levy. I don't see an appetite to chew any portion of that and tax our residents or our businesses any more than we have to. We're going to continue to monitor the situation and make corrections as things move along. What that means, I don't know. I mean, things are changing on a daily basis, so we'll keep you plugged in as changes become known to us.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? So we would be looking for a vote to transmit this budget to the Finance Committee.
We'll make a motion that we transmit the budget to the Finance Committee in accordance with the Town Charter and dialogues.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Moving along, we have no tabled items. We have one member item. I will give it to you, Mr. Corrine.
I'm not presenting. I simply ask that town administration provide an update to us on the migrants within the town. I had been approached by a couple residents who had voiced concern, hearing various I had been approached by a couple residents who had voiced concern, hearing various things going around in terms of an increasing number, as well as the fact that the town has had to foot the vast majority or all of the money and other things along that line. So I just asked for an update from Town Administration, just in terms of, you know, the numbers we have right now. Are we expected to see an increase? How much is the town fronting? Is the state providing support? Just so that, you know, in my view, the, the best way to deal with interest in the community as well as potential rumors is daylight and transparency and to put the information out there so that they can read it for themselves and sort of counter some of the, I would say, crazy things I've heard in terms of, you know, the way that the town has been dealing with this. So I just asked for an update in that respect.
Through the Chair to members of the, to the Board. I provided an update in memo form. I don't know if the members have an opportunity to review it. I will read it so the public has as much information as you have. What I can say is I think part of the struggles we're dealing with is the state revenue required in order to house the sheltered immigrants. FY '24 is approaching 1.3 billion. And if not for that, I don't know if any of those resources would trickle back to the local communities in a different form of aid. How long that's going to continue, we don't know. But in summary, if I can at least read what I have provided to the Board. As I stated in the memo, back in August of 2023, when the town issued a press release informing the public that 20 families were placed by the state in a hotel here in Auburn, an update was made by a Board Member on the agenda tonight. As of that date, and as of the writing of this memo, there are currently 95 rooms reserved at this local hotel by, by the state. Of the 95 rooms reserved, 70 rooms are occupied, resulting from what the state, they prioritized by way of consolidation for administrative agency to oversee the sheltered families, make it less fragmented and more concentrated. The most recent influx occurred on February 16th. As we have been told, these state consolidations were prioritized to allow for better oversight by an outside agency to administratively and operationally make things more accountable and more efficient. As provided by the Superintendent, and there's a, there's an attachment by our Superintendent of Auburn Public Schools, the total number of students have been integrated into Auburn's school system is 38, and they range from grades K through 12. The state provided a one-time $1,000 per student reimbursement for the first 22 students enrolled on 9/12/2023, with a daily funding formula amounting to just shy of $105 per day, per student. For 173 days, for a total accounts receivable revenue due by the Commonwealth of $399,211. The town has received 121 of that $399 on January 24th of '24. With respect to the other 16 migrant students, the town anticipates receiving $125,868 for the enrollment period of approximately 75 days. The total state funding reimbursement of $547,079 is to be used for supplies, iPads, classroom supplies, instructional materials, and a .6 EL teacher, two additional staff to support student needs and transportation. Since the site is now under an assigned oversight management company, acronym of MARK, Making Opportunities Count, who is currently providing a full scope of support and stabilization services, eliminating the need for additional town services and support. Although, AYFS continues to provide food, snacks, and clothing on a weekly basis as needed. Prior to MARK's oversight involvement, the town did incur costs for translation and transportation services. However, the town was able to work with regional partners to get those costs covered. Given that there is still capacity of the 95 rooms reserved by the state, future enrollment of additional students is unknown. Conversely, if a migrant student who is presently enrolled and becomes unenrolled, then the funding would then end. Any and all funds received by the town is allowed to be carried over and expended through We are currently not getting the local room occupancy tax that we would normally get for those rooms being booked, but I've been told by the, I have been told by the Senior Deputy Commissioner for Local Services, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that consideration for a funding formula is being considered. And just, please stay tuned. For those of you who would like to provide assistance or additional support to families, the Auburn Youth and Family Services will be accepting monetary as well as other donations to support the individuals and family at the shelter. Food, clothing, diapers, personal care items, gift cards are accepted. Checks can be made out to the Auburn Youth and Family Services and should be noted migrant homeless shelter in the memo field and sent to or dropped off at 21 Pheasant Court, Auburn, Mass. 01501. To donate online, you can also follow the link to the Auburn Youth and Family Services website. Respectfully, tell me a second.
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, it was the source of funding or the all amounts that are listed here. Do those cover the expenses or the taxpayers locally on?
I believe that covers the expenses, correct, Dr. Chamberlain?
They are currently covering our expenses. The one piece I want to make clear that I have learned through this whole process is everything can change in a minute. And so these numbers reflect the idea that these families are with us through the end of the school year. Seemingly, because we've kind of become part of this consolidation site, that could be true. But what I also know is that it could change in two weeks from now, and they could say some of them are leaving. And so that's why this funding is a bit precarious right now. And you'll see that I've not accounted for all of this funding through next year because I want to make sure that we actually get the funding, you know? So right now, it's helping us. It's helping us with transportation. It's helping us with some staffing that we need to support these students. We're going to be purchasing some programming that'll help better us, allow us to track their progress and things that we have to file for the state with them. So right now, it is helping us a great deal.
And I just wanted to make sure that was clear because I think the number one complaint from residents is that we, the residents, shouldn't be paying for that. But if it's being offset with this, then that kind of negates that point. That's why I just wanted to be clear on it. Thank you.
And you'll see that there's a bit of one grade level with more students than the rest, but for the most part, they've been very spread out as far as where they, what grade levels they were in, which was really helpful, right? Because it's easy to kind of absorb one or two or three at a grade level. And so, so far, I have to say, I think the process has gone very well in the schools. And I don't see it as a big burden. It's been a big change, but we've been able to manage that.
And then as far as the lost revenue from the taxation, is, there's discussion about making that up through the state legislators, state legislator as well, or?
I was told at the Annual MA Conference where I sought out DOR officials to have this discussion on a number of things. One, how to treat the revenue coming in, whether or not it can be put in a special revenue account, carried over, expended over a period of years, which the answer is yes. The other one is the room occupancy loss, which I estimate will probably be about $100,000. It's one of five hotels. It's roughly one-fifth. We're getting about $800,000 a year. Could be slightly a little more than that. But they use occupancy numbers to drive the formula for that reimbursement or the actual revenue collected. In this case, it's not being collected. So I think they're trying to come up with a methodology that they take a three-year average and then allow for that level of reimbursement to come back to the, to the town.
Thank you.
Okay. So I apologize, Dr. Chamberlain. I don't mean to make you pop up like a, like a Jack in the Box, but just in general, how are these 38 students doing? Are they adjusting well? Are they, what kind of services are they in need of? Because obviously culturally, as well as just climate conditions are very different than what they're used to. How are they adjusting and how is the student body adjusting to them?
Kids adjust a lot more easy, a lot easier than adults do, I will tell you that. So I wouldn't say this is anything big and traumatic in our schools. We accept new students all the time. These have been no different. Our staff is, they're all trained in sheltered English immersion. They all have to be through the Department of Eds, so they know that there are strategies and tools that you use with students that are learning a new language and come to us not speaking English. We have great staff who have further training related to that. And again, we are going to hire a couple of staff just because of the number of students that we've had, but it would be the same thing. So I think it's been an excellent transition, and I think diversity is a good thing, right? And it's, it's good to have different folks around. So it's gone very, very well, and that's in large part to our administrators and our teachers.
Yeah, I think people get lost in titles like migrants. These are human beings, and certainly, I know I wouldn't want to have to live in a hotel with my family, and that's all I have, let alone just growing up in America. We have, even in Massachusetts, we have many citizens who are living in hotels. I remember on the planning board when these five hotels came online, that was a concern from members of this Board, our predecessors, that this was going to become, you know, a de facto homeless shelter even back then. But we, we lose track of the fact that these are humans, and I don't know that I'd want to live with four people or three people in a very confined space.
No, they've done very well in school. I really, we have no concerns, you know, like all kids, right? All kids have different needs, for sure, and we're meeting those needs. But I think we're very well positioned to provide this support, and I am encouraged with the funding that that has helped us.
That's great to hear. Thank you. And just follow-up through the Town Manager. Are any other services being, obviously, the school department is the principal one that we think about, but any other departments? Are we seeing a higher incidence of, say, emergency services having to go to the hotel? Are we seeing, you know, any sort of issue with emergency services? I'm seeing two shakes of no, so.
Just a little impact on the police department's side.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
Question. Have, have any, has, have any of the migrants left?
So I actually, I think we, we were told by the state that we were going to receive roughly 30 families from Northboro. In the end, we only received seven. So they've been placed in other areas.
Right.
And weren't placed here in Auburn. That's why there's still some capacity.
Yep.
Of roughly 25 rooms.
But even going back to the people who first came last summer, has anyone left?
I, I think initially we had 34 and, 35, and it went down to 32, so.
All right, a little bit.
Two or three were, were placed in, I don't know what happened to them, but they left.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, just more of a statement. I just want to thank the Town Manager for putting this memo together and being comprehensive, and I think this addresses a lot of the concern the community has. And I wanted to make sure that, that this kind of information gets out there to, to counter some of the, the rumors and innuendo and negative feelings that's bubbling up, you know? And I want to thank Police Department, Fire Department, certainly School Department, and the library as well, I know, has done special services to, to, you know, welcome these, you know, I don't like the word migrants, humans and community members to our community and fully embrace them and make them part of Auburn. And I just want to thank our very professional town staff for stepping up in unknown times and really delivering and, and, you know, making up and proud and showing the community, you know, exactly what Auburn is, which is a welcoming community regardless of your background and how you got here. We're going to open our arms and welcome you. So I just want to thank you for putting that together. And I do want to take the opportunity, I was not at the last meeting, I did watch it. And I know that one of the gentlemen who stood up and spoke regarding his concerns as a veteran and potential loss of his home and his living and different circumstances he was going through with the, at one of the trailer parks. It wasn't mentioned there, and I think it's important, you know, for maybe the two viewers we have right now at this point, but really to put it out there that no veteran in Massachusetts should be homeless or face eviction. There is specifically Chapter 115 money, local aid money available for veterans for a wide array of services. So I'd ask one more request is that if our Veteran Services Coordinator can locate that person and outreach them and make sure that they are enrolled in those services and possibly work with other residents of that same mobile home, the two mobile homes, to, to make sure that they are enrolled in those services and identify other services that they qualify for and help them get set up. And those that aren't veterans, but maybe seniors, we have a great staff at the Senior Center of Outreach that can do the same thing for them and make sure that they are, you know, enrolled in various services, SNAP benefits, Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera. So if we can just, you know, make sure that that is communicated back to them, that they understand that there are those resources within the town. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll definitely have our outreach worker reach out directly to the parks and explain what services may be available. I'll also have a discussion with our Veterans Agent, VSO. I know she's all about outreach, and she's doing what she can to get the word out there in terms of 115 benefits. But thank you for the feedback, and we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have anybody else signed up for public comment again. There are some minutes in your packet from January 22nd. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I will accept them as read. I would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is a yes as well. Thank you.